Welcome to the 12th Board of Education meeting.
Yes, sir.
June 1st, 2015. I will take attendance.
Valer.
I'm here.
Tony Bedini. No. Alan Brown. Yes. Greg Kava. No. Michelle Gora.
Here.
Emily Hibbard. No. I'm here. Kelly Lott. No. Senator Pody, I understand is not going to be here. Michael Sinatra?
Here.
Susan Stunt? No. And Peter Taglin?
Here.
Tony, we will wait. One, two, three, four, five, six. Six of us present. All right. Welcome all. Thanks for coming. Our first item on our agenda is our recognition of students, and we have quite a few, so we'll get started. Dr. Costantino, your first is recognition of superintendent student award recipients.
Yes.
Litchfield County Superintendent's Association.
As it is. Okay, you're gonna come with Dan or me?
All right. And Greg Kava is here.
Okay. Okay. You know, why don't you move over there? There you go. There you go. So, we're gonna take pictures too, right? So we have the regional review. Great, we're all good. Okay, everyone, good evening. Happy to see you all. Thank you for coming out in the rain. Although we need the rain, it's a lot of rain. So, we are here tonight to honor wonderful students from our schools, and I thank the parents and the students who are coming out. Many of you have been recognized at other parties throughout the year, but these are really distinguished awards, and we wanted to certainly recognize you in front of the Board of Education. So, we're gonna start with the recognition of the superintendent student award recipients, and those are from the Litchfield County Superintendent's Association. I am a superintendent, as you know. There are six superintendent associations around Connecticut, and Litchfield is the county that I belong to. I also belong to the Western because our region can go either way. But these students were honored in November up at the Cornucopia, and it was a wonderful evening of dinner and laughter with their families, but we also wanted to award them again tonight. So we're gonna start with, let me see, Katia, or that is any order that I can see. Here we go. So we're gonna start with Rivey Gilbo. Not here yet. Okay, there we go. There we go. Evan Warner. That's awesome. And we'll give them that. We have to get a nice picture. Evan, congratulations. Come on over. Don't be shy. Which school are you in, Evan?
Burnham.
Burnham. Excellent. Congratulations.
We'll take a picture, so.
Take a nice picture.
Hold this.
Hold it. Smile. Look, you're looking over here. So many cameras, right? Congratulations. So, I know that Wyatt Kane is not here because he's in the play at WPS, so he's gonna be awarded and celebrated in two weeks with his father, who was a volunteer, and I think another sibling also when we get to eighth grade. So, it's a very prestigious family. With a name like Kane, what would you expect, right? Okay, our next student is Mason Goodell. Okay, Mason Warner, yeah. Okay, let's see. Moving along. And then we have 11th grade from Shabat, Mary Beth Seeger. Congratulations. We need to practice before graduation, so this is good practice for us. Good. Congratulations. Last, 12th grade at Shabat is Luke Wright. Correct, because you were in a show.
Yeah, I did.
Yes, you were. Which show was that?
That was Two by Two.
Two by Two. That's right. So, a lot of awards. A lot of accolades. Now, we're gonna do the Cade Student Leadership Award recipients. Cade is a Connecticut Association of Boards of Education. Our Board of Education is a member for many, many years. They advise the Board on policy, they help answer questions, they provide a really nice conference in November where we learn about different regulations and rules and laws. So it's a wonderful way to give our Board a lot of professional developments, because things are always changing in education. So, we have, and why doesn't Mrs. Gora come up here with us, and she could present it to her daughter, Abigail Gora, 8th grade, Chappaq Valley School? Okay, yeah, there we go. You can get this and you can get a letter probably, right? Yeah, you can get a student leadership certificate, you can get a beautiful award, and the door take a picture. Come on, you can take a picture. Okay. Okay, good. Congratulations. Our next student is Wilson King, who is not here. Okay, he's at Washington Farmer's School. And then our next student is Sebastian Taylor, 12th grade. Congratulations. Sebastian.
And I just wanna say a special word to Sebastian, tortured by sitting through our Board of Education meeting. All these many months in doing the recording and the audio and sound, so thank you very much. Good luck in the Lord.
Good. Thank you. She's fabulous in that role. Just fabulous. So we're very fortunate. And then our last Cade Student Leadership Award goes to Jade Walker. Congratulations to Jade. How many of you saw Our Town? Yes. So Jade was a narrator, right? In Our Town, and she was amazing. She really was. Congratulations. I mean, just unbelievable. It was really, it was truly remarkable. You know, cute parts, everything written on her hands, it was really, and so poised, really beautiful. She was really beautiful. And now our last is the recognition of the top five academic seniors, so we'll call up Mrs. Gallo, and she can stand here with us, be part of the picture taking.
Nothing I like better than to get my picture taken. It is one of my very greatest pleasures to introduce the top five, which represents four years of hard work and more than that, because the students that I'm about to call here are students who we rely on all the time for lots and lots of different things. I'm sure I won't do them justice, but I'm gonna give it a whirl. Rachel Prosser.
Hana, the senior project. We'll talk back to them, and we'll take pictures and awards.
Rachel's senior project, medical outreach near and far, has taken her to the Czech Republic for a pre-med shadowing experience, and then she took those skills back home to the local ambulance company. She's trained as an EMT, which doesn't happen a lot in high school, especially when you're also getting really, really good grades and doing everything else. She was a volunteer for Unified Sports, the Bridgewater Fair, and she played field hockey in Chappaq. We wish her continued success as she heads to UConn in the fall.
Congratulations. We're both wearing gloves. If you were my sister, I would say you cannot stand next to me. But you are not. So, I will switch.
Up another month.
Yes. Congratulations. Noah. He's a musician with Chappaq and has done a wonderful job. He has also served as a summer camp counselor. He demonstrates ceramic techniques at the Washington Art Association. I think he's quite the Renaissance man and a quiet leader. Noah earned the distinction of commended scholar for the exemplary score he received on the PSAT last year, and we wish him continued success, and we're sure about that as he heads off to Havreford in the fall. Good. Congratulations. Do I see Christine Klein here? I didn't before. Okay, I'm gonna talk about her anyway, because she really is wonderful as well. Christine has commanded our respect at Chappaq with a stellar academic record and a unique perspective on a variety of classroom discussions. Her senior project belies her future adventures, as she has spent time as a wanderlust. She is creating travel writing and photographic images, and has published her own magazine about her travels. She will then travel to Syracuse in the fall. Christine Klein. I'd now like to introduce our valedictorian, Kelsey Johnson. Kelsey is honoring her grandfather by studying Guillain-Barre syndrome in her senior project. She's raising money for local fire and ambulance departments and shadowing a doctor. Field hockey, basketball, softball, captain of all three. She is just someone that we look to, that students look to for leadership, and that I look to for her steady presence in our school, and I look forward to great success when she travels to, I didn't write it down, Purdue. Thank you very much. To Purdue in the fall. And she's here tonight, because it's raining, where she'd be pitching, right?
That's right. That's right.
And last, but certainly not the least, it's my great honor to introduce our valedictorian, Sebastian Taylor. There is a lot that could be said about Seb. As I said, I don't think I could do any of these students justice, but his senior project brought TED Talks that delighted a diverse audience in our school. He's a talented musician. He serves his community, his school community, very well. He's our go-to guy for pretty much everything. If we don't know how to do it, then we ask Seb, and Seb takes care of it. And he has done that graciously and quietly throughout his four years in high school. I really appreciate it, and St. Andrews will be very lucky to get him. Seb Taylor. Are you allowed to have guests at college? This is a road trip? Okay. Christine Klein. Christine has been a quiet leader in our school. I know you've heard this, but you can hear it again, it'll only take a minute. She's commanded our respect with a stellar academic record and a unique perspective on a variety of classroom discussions, and her senior project belies her future adventures, as she has spent time as a wanderlust, creating travel writing and photographic images, publishing magazines. And she will travel to Syracuse in the fall. Congratulations. Okay. Great. So, in honor of the celebration, we have some cake and drinks, so please feel free to get up. We'll cut some cakes, but first of all, the students who are here who got awards, you can come up and take a nice group picture. Love that. Maybe with the Board of Education members, you wanna come over here? No? Come on. Come over here. Over here. All he can get with me, I'll get him. The principals wanna come in?
Sure.
Anybody? Come up. Mrs. Palola, Mrs. Ferreira. Put a little bit of pic, come on. Now we have to look at Mrs. Gambino, because she's the one.
I'm going to step. I'm going to step. I'm gonna try to get it all in. Is that in? Okay, we're in.
I can barely see you.
That's okay. The kids are much better looking.
Thank you again for hosting our party here. It's one of the best nights of the year to be able to recognize our students, and it's all about. Congratulations to all of them again.
And the cane was still.
Still is. Sebastian is still here.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, moving on. Next item on our agenda is public comment. Is anybody who wishes to address this? All right, seeing Noah, then I'll move on. Item four, consent agenda, which is the minutes of our education committee meeting on May 18th, 2015. Is there anyone who wishes to move anything from the consent agenda? I think the consent agenda is approved. Item five, report to the chair. I'll just note, I got a receipt, a letter today dated May 28th, from Lynn Werner, Executive Director of the Housatonic Valley Association, requesting permission to host their annual fundraiser, the 25th Annual Auction to Benefit the Environment, on Sunday, November 22nd, 2015. Asking to be held at the Washington Primary School, and that we waive our no alcohol provision. They go on to state that beverages are served only by licensed caterers, they've never had an incident in all the years they've been doing it. So I'll ask the superintendent to put this on our next agenda for consideration. This is, I'm sorry, on November 20, Sunday, November 26th, 2015.
We're getting a lot of these requests, and I think that's wonderful, because we can showcase communities, but wouldn't it be nice if these, a couple of these people or these organizations could make a donation, something to schools? I mean, they are raising a lot, and rightfully so, but.
You mean, there's certain ones.
Oh, I do not.
It's a not-for-profit, that's a little awkward, but I certainly feel that if it's a for-profit organization, that that would be appropriate.
Even if it is a for-profit.
We have a library, and this, the HPA.
And then, well, the Burnham group is new, but.
I had thought it would be appropriate for them to offer the superintendent, and I guess so, but.
How about the Board of Ed?
I mean, these are public buildings. They are owned by the region. Just for the record, I've never actually asked about it. Yeah, I think, I think they have the right.
They're not our public.
I'm sorry?
I mean, like the Housatonic group, they usually, a lot of those organizers are more in the Kent area, more west of us. I'm just saying, it's not like our local townspeople, of course we're all a part of that, this is all regional stuff. I'm just saying, just to think about, wouldn't it be nice if there was, because if they wanted to use, and I'm not sure, Tony, if you're correct me, but the town hall, there would be some kind of fee, wouldn't there? Assuming it didn't blow up again. So.
We don't know, but.
Stipendments.
Not, not, not. We don't charge to feed.
We, yes, we charge to cover.
Out of pocket.
Yeah, anything out of pocket. And I have to just say, I can't speak to the Housatonic, but the Gunn Library is very generous with their time. When the art show is there, they get the kids involved, they invite the high school kids, they have some of their vendors and artists work with our students, we've done some projects with them, so they really have been wonderful.
Can we ask them to stop the flooding on the Chappaqs? Washington primary.
I can try.
All right, so we'll put that on the agenda for next week. Also, I usually cut out newspaper articles as I see and mention things, and I forgot articles that I cut out, but I know that the, I hate to keep pointing the same girls out, but the, I hate to, but, Chappaq, girls tennis team won the virtue league singles title and doubles title, and Michelle's daughter was on that team, so congratulations to them. Coach Kelly and her daughter won the singles title, and the girls won the doubles title, so that was wonderful. And yet, all of all, spring teams have good seasons, so. All right, moving on. Super tennis report. Dr. Costantino?
Yes, I have a couple. I'll start with personnel. We have an appointment of Allison Buckley as an educational assistant at Chappaq. Lisa Zinobi-Ramano is resigning as an English teacher at Chappaq. Rita Gregory is going on a leave of absence for maternity leave. That's from Boothbury. So all of those people are being replaced, or we're working on that, just so you're aware. The senior project schedule is in your packet, and see, this is senior project week, and it really is a fabulous week, where the students showcase not only their senior projects, but culmination of all the skills they have learned in the region 12 schools over their 12 and 13 years here, and it really is amazing, it makes you very proud. I hope you can come. If you can't come, and you have people who, you know, say, you know, "What about Chappaq?" Send them to one of these, and it really is amazing. Today I saw three of them. I saw Greg Kava's daughter, who did a great job on some of the more unknown civil activists from Connecticut, which was very interesting, a lot of research, and then she did some teaching to her AP psych class, was excellent. I saw Emily Allworth, who did work on plants, and what is the word?
Succulents.
Succulents. Succulent plants, and that was wonderful, and she's going for a degree at Sarah.
Lawrence.
Lawrence, thank you, University in Biology and Art. And then I saw, oh, sorry, so somebody else today, should've wrote that down. Oh, I saw Ann Marie Rock, who did the Model UN, and she was fabulous about the days here where they had Russian scientists come in and work with the kids, and it was just wonderful. Really is amazing, and it's also amazing how they take these projects and they link them to the learner outcomes of Chappaq. It really, it really is. You should be very, very proud. If you can get to any of them, try to do that. The agri-science application, I just wanna let you know, there's a little misunderstanding. When we went to Hartford in March, we knew that our bills were, if you want to say the word dead, I hate to use that word, but were not intact the way they were submitted. Art O'Neil is working to get our bills attached to a school construction part of the legislature. It's 700 or 7,000, do you know the number?
722.
7022. So basically, we are still alive. We're hoping that he has a major amendment to one of the school construction bills that will get passed. It is very nerve-wracking now, I'm not gonna tell you that it's not, there's a lot going on up there. If you watch the news, you know, as Bob says, you know, it's sausage-making time now, and you really don't wanna see what's happening, you just know that sausage is gonna come out. So, we are still ever hopeful. We're still in it, and we're moving forward as if we're in. Oh, do you wanna say something? There was a meeting today. Do we know anything that happened at the meeting?
No, I just wanna make sure, because of the talk about things being dead. There actually was a meeting at 1:00 today at the State Department of Education regarding our project. So I'll be sending an email yet again tomorrow to our representative at the State Department of Education, and I mean, it can be news, but it absolutely is still alive, and it is, and it's still drawing excitement at the Capitol level and the State Department level.
When you said dead, you really didn't mean dead, which meant when the bill was originally submitted, gets either amended out of existence or gets changed, things get attached to other bills, it's a very, very complicated process.
Exactly. Exactly.
It's not that something's dead.
No, I, that's just people have.
It passes into a new phase.
Right. People have been saying that, so just want everybody to understand that we are still, you know, alive and moving forward. Do you wanna add anything, Bob?
Yeah, I just, now's the time, if you have the time, write an email to your representatives supporting it, make sure that they know that you're still with them, because they'll get it through that way. If they don't hear, they think you're disinterested at this point.
We call.
They may go, it's just so many things are going on up there. If they hear from you, it's a good thing.
Just a reminder.
Just remind you, that was a good time.
For the people who are supporting, Michelle Cook, Art O'Neil, Bob Kane, JR Shadzinski from Monroe.
And this gets a lot of support. Yes, Peter?
Well, I'm not really concerned, and there we go, I don't understand what's going on, but what I'm concerned about is our relationship with getting the towns to do something, because whether we like it or not, ultimately, the solution lies in these three towns to fill the school system. The STEM program, we understand the nature of what it is and what it can and can't do, but the towns are the real focus at some point. We have to do something more, I don't know how much we can do as a board, but I think we gotta start pushing the towns as a board, because whether the STEM program goes through or not, it isn't gonna ultimately solve our situation. And I don't know what we can do, but we're not leaning on anybody, and we need to come up with some kind of plan from the board, is how we need to address these towns, what are they doing? Are they making attempts, I know Bridgewater has televisions or whatever, but somehow, maybe we need, we even had a meeting with Selectment and Finance Committee, we had one meeting, and that was it. I think we need to have another meeting to find out what's going on. If we don't lean on people, you know, to some degree, I use the word lean, because I can't think of a better word, but we need to become more proactive in that regard, for my advantage, boy, because ultimately, if the towns are the solution, we can't solve it in the towns, we're not gonna solve it in the town.
I was at a Rotary meeting last Tuesday, and Dan Schur was there from Washington Economic Development, and he was talking about a lot of different plans that Washington is trying to move forward to bring in more business, to bring in more families. So I think everybody is working on that. After we know for sure whether or not we're gonna get the agri-science STEM, I'll be happy to have another joint meeting, and we could talk about moving forward, but let's see what happens here first, and then.
Okay. Good.
I was gonna say, you know, we're not the only people that are suffering through this. I think the towns are very much aware of what the issues are and how what they have to do. I just think that it's not an easy problem to solve. There was an interesting article in the New York Times last week about an area town in Japan, that is, rural towns in Japan are facing the exact same problems. They are depopulating, their industry is moving, the kids don't wanna come back, they'd rather go to Tokyo, a city that now has 38 million people, think about that, five times the size of New York in terms of population. And what they're trying, what this one town is trying, is they have, they've tried some initiatives to bring people back. One of the things they've done is they've made their town very friendly to certain types of tech startups, not so much in terms of taxes, but in terms of getting them to appreciate the lifestyle, because if your choice is between extremely crowded city, and if you've ever tried to board a subway car in Tokyo, you know how difficult it is, you're more packed than New York, and they're trying to show them that they can have a place where they can actually work, have a place of work, where they're literally so close to their home, that their children can walk there, and they're trying to highlight the kind of environment that they give, and they've been successful, and they're attracting some businesses that come there. towns as a board, because whether the STEM program goes through or not, it isn't going to ultimately solve our situation. And I don't know what we can do, but we're not leaning on anybody, and we need to come up with some kind of plan from the board, it's how we need to address these towns, what are they doing, are they making attempts, I know Bridgewater has sales meetings or whatever, but somehow, maybe we need, we even had a meeting with Selectmen and Finance Committee, we had one meeting and that was it, I think we need to have another meeting to find out what's going on. If we don't, if we don't lean on people, you know, to some degree, I use the word lean because I can't think of a better word, but we need to become more proactive in that regard for my vantage point, because ultimately, if the towns are the solution, we can't solve it in the towns, we're not going to solve it in the.
I was at a Rotary meeting last Tuesday, and Dan Scher was there from Washington Economic Development, and he was talking about a lot of different plans that Washington is trying to move forward to bring in more business, to bring in more families, so I think everybody is working on that. After we know for sure whether or not we're going to get the agri-science STEM, I'll be happy to have another joint meeting, and we could talk about moving forward, but let's see what happens here first and then.
Okay. Good. I was going to say, you know, we're not the only people that are suffering through this, I think the towns are very much aware of what the issues are and how what they have to do, I just think that it's not an easy problem to solve. There was an interesting article in the New York Times earlier last week about, about an area town in Japan, that is, rural towns in Japan are facing the exact same problems. They are depopulating, their industry is moving, the kids don't want to come back, they'd rather go to Tokyo, a city that now has 38 million people, think about that, five times the size of New York in terms of population. And they're, what they're trying, what this one town is trying, is they have, they've tried some initiatives to bring people back, one of the things they've done is they, they've made their town very friendly to certain types of tech startups, not so much in terms of taxes, but in terms of getting them to appreciate the lifestyle, because if your, if your choice is between extremely crowded city, and if you've ever tried to board a subway car in Tokyo, you know how difficult it is, you're more packed than New York, and they're trying to show them that they can have a place where they can actually work, have a place of work where they're literally so close to their home that their children can walk there, and they're trying to highlight the kind of environment that they give, and they've been successful, and they're attracting some businesses that come there because people want that lifestyle. Now, I think what we see here is people tend to come here, they tend to come here when they're in their, at the youngest, in their mid to late 30s, and frequently into their 40s, because they're looking for something different, they're looking for a much better lifestyle than we have here, and they want an environment to bring their kids up in, it's a little more like things used to be. And I think if the towns did a very good job of selling that, and if they rethought the way they go about zoning, and I don't mean from the perspective of making lower-density housing, that seems to be the popular thing, let's make cheap housing, let's, that doesn't necessarily do it, what they really need to do is figure out how they can have people live and work there, how they can have people create a community, and I, I think that's another thing, I think they should look carefully at that. And I know that Roxbury is, for example, I know, I've talked to Barbara Henry about this, and I know that they are leaning these things, and I'm sure the other towns are as well, so. I, I think the approach is, it's very difficult, but there's a way to do it, and what we have to do is lead with our strengths, if we lead with the fact that we have a great physical environment and a great place to live, combine that with the efforts that this board can make to take the school system to a very high level, you put those two things together and you're going to have an attraction that will cause some people to come, not millions, but some, and I think that's the critical thing, and I think if we don't get the education level there, we're not upholding our aim, so we really have to keep pushing the initiatives that Superintendent and her staff are pushing, because I think that's going to take us to that level, we could really have some of the best schools around here. We have great schools, but we could have stunning schools if we really thought, and especially things that could dovetail with those industries.
I'm sorry.
I just don't, my issue is, I just don't sense a partnership.
I'm sorry?
I just don't sense a partnership, that's my feeling, I don't sense that.
Well, I feel like I have a partnership with them, I mean, I meet with the Selectmen at least once every six to eight weeks. We just did a workshop in all of the three towns, they weren't, they weren't attended like we wanted to, but, you know, makes people's choices. We're going to be Saturday at the Washington Fair, Kim Gallo's going to have a table, and then I'm going to have a table July 11th, that'd be whatever that one is, the Washington Fair, number two, Green Fair. Then we're going to be at the Bridgewater Fair.
Right.
So if we can get somebody to be at Fiddlin' and Pickin', we'll have some, you know, we're just, you know, we, we, we have a partnership, but it's a, it's a hard time of the year, but I think we're at this point right now, we're doing things internally to move forward, we have to wait to see what happens, it's just a very anxious time.
Speaking of legislative action, I was wondering if you could give us an update on S-Back and the legislature, I heard that there was a vote taken recently.
Yeah, the legislature took a vote, I'm not sure if it went to both houses and it's been signed off on yet, but basically, there's a big push from the Education Committee at the state to change the S-Back in grade 11, to remove it from grade 11, and to make it a standard test, they're hoping for the SAT, they haven't said that yet, but we're hoping that that happens, we got a lot of pushback, not only from Connecticut, but all around, for kids who have to take that S-Back in 11th grade, when that's the grade they're taking the SATs, they're taking AP exams, they're getting ready for college, all of those things that make the year very difficult, and then you add on the S-Back. So, we haven't had official word yet, I'm not exactly sure if it's going to be for next year, because as far as I know, the, you know, the tests that you get in your state are federally funded, as far as, I don't want to say federally funded, are, are part of the law in which you apply for your federal funds, et cetera, and that grant, per se, or whatever they would call it at the state level, is due by June 30th. So I don't know if they are, and, and part of that grant is you have to show how you're going to show progress, et cetera, how you're going to assess your students based on a research-based test, so I'm not sure if they could literally change that to the SAT, get it passed wherever it has to get passed, and get it into a, it's the grant, I'm, I'm not thinking of the right word, but it's basically the federal fund that you submit all by June 30th, but I think if it doesn't happen for next year, I think it would happen the following year. And the other piece that's very good is that in 2016, the SATs are changing to a more common core standards-based assessment, they're changing them, and so it kind of all dovetails together, so as soon as we know something, I'll let you know. I just have a couple on the roof, thanks. Okay, if you recall, last year, in the fall, we did have a couple of glitches in the schedule for the high school and the middle school, really due to no one's fault other than, you know, starting up with Power School, so I just want to let you know the progress, I asked Lloyd Ferrero to send me a little information, we have revised and implemented a new scheduling process to ensure that students' parents will have access to a completed schedule for the first week of August, students will then have the ability to make schedule changes with counselors during the third week of August, so the counselors will be in that week, they can make changes, so they may start school with agreed-upon schedule, schedules will be published through Power School, so you'll get an email when that's open. To date, today, the master schedule is complete, all teachers know their assignments and their schedule for next year, special ed, co-teaching, and power assignments have been determined based on the master schedule, part of the contract says you really need to know your schedule, not per se, you know, I'm teaching math, algebra one, period one, or I'm teaching math, algebra one, calculus, whatever, that kind of thing. The middle school schedule is complete, all middle school students have been scheduled into classes, and classes have been balanced, special education students and co-teaching power assignments have been completed in the middle school, the high school schedule is 75% completed, the majority of the high school students have been scheduled into their core classes, counselors are now hand-scheduling electives with students and making adjustments to individual schedules as needed. So what happens is, you know, you put in, I want these electives, and the counselor sees, well, this is your schedule, you know, you have to choose between, you know, ceramics and keyboarding, for example, so that's happening, so I'm very excited about that, I think that that, the high school will get that to the parents, middle high school will get it to the parents, and we'll all be good.
That's very good.
Yes, absolutely.
Pat, when do you expect, when do you expect that we'll, you'll be complete with the high school schedule, so you'll be able to release this to the parents?
First, April, August 1st, everything will be released. The kids will have an idea of what their schedule is before that, because they're meeting with the counselors, but to get.
But if it's final, with the middle school's final, why isn't that being released now?
Oh, the middle school? I think it won't just go, do you know when they're releasing the middle school, is it August 1st? Yeah, I just, I just think it's easier for everything to get done, because sometimes what may happen is a teacher may have to be switched over from one to another because of an enrollment, maybe we need, you know, another art class in the high school, we may take it from a middle class to this middle school, so it's that kind of stuff.
Right, I understand that, you, you, that could happen at the, the week before school starts, the question I have is, why if the schedule isn't complete, if the schedule's complete before the end of June, why are we waiting till August, that's what I want to know, I think it's bureaucratic, I'd like to know the reason, I mean, at some point in time, you've got.
Well, the counselors are still working.
No, no, I understand they are now, they may not finish it before the end of June, I understand that, but it seems to me, whether the schedule is available June 30th, whether it's complete August, July 1st, July 15th, why wait? I mean, I kind of have visions of that movie, of, of Michelangelo and Pope Julius, when Julius keeps asking him on the Sistine Chapel, when will you make an end? And I think that's the question people have about the schedule, when will we make an end? And if we've made an end, and if the end is in July, let's release it, why wait?
Well, I haven't said that they made an end in July, what I've said to you is they're meeting with the students, and just because I meet with you and I know you want music first, art second, foreign language, virtual high school or something else, it doesn't mean I put it in the schedule, means I may have met with you, I may not have gone into the schedule, yeah, it's a very busy time.
I understand that, but maybe I'm misunderstanding you, because I know that they select classes.
That's done.
I mean, Peter, I mean, every high school student sits down in their freshman year and maps out the four years.
Right.
And then they sit down early in the senior year and map, junior year, and map out their senior year.
Right, but they only register for the year, the next year.
Right, only for the next year they actually register.
Okay.
I understand.
So they did that in January, February, whenever they did that. Then what happens is they develop classes and they keep running the schedule to get a higher percentage, you want to get the highest percentage possible of kids to get their core classes.
Right.
So that's what happens, so they're at 75% now. I don't know, they say the majority of high school students have been scheduled, I don't know if they're going to try again, you know what I'm saying, to try to get it to 78% or 80%, I don't know. So that may be happening, and then they have to deal with the electives, and part of the issue with the electives in a small school like this is sometimes you have to revise the electives, you may want to, and I'm sorry, I don't have the, the classes on the top of my, you may want to offer, say, some kind of a sociology class, and you only have two or three kids, and you have to go through everybody on their electives before you know whether or not I'm going to.
I don't doubt it's complicated.
Okay, so that is what's happening, but what's really happening now is the counselors are trying to get everybody to graduate. So what kind of happens is, yeah, Power School is at this point, right now, we have to get everybody to graduate, we have to get everybody to do their senior project, we have to get everybody to graduate, we have to make sure that, you know, they're all on the road to June 13th. After that, then they come back again, and they're back into the schedule, so it's kind of like, they need the time, I'm assuming, I, I don't think it's, by August 1st, everybody got there.
They may not be finished until, until July 31st, and you can't release till August 1st, but if they are deemed finished, and they've got a complete schedule and it's done, and it happens to be July 1st, I think we should release them.
Okay, I will, this is what I'll do, we have another meeting in two weeks.
Why, do it at one time, and that one time seems to be August 1, done, we're done.
But if I can give you more information, I'll let you know, how about that? Okay?
This is still an improvement.
It's a, oh, absolutely.
That's the main, that's the most important.
It wasn't ready early in all last year.
Okay, ASAP, I just want to let you know, I was there at the Young Writers Conference on Saturday night, it was wonderful, we had two students who were honored, Noella, who is a, I think she's a senior?
No.
Or 11th grade?
She's 10th mark, Noelia.
Oh, yeah, right, I'm sorry, Noelia is 10th grade, and Bridgette was an 8th grader, and it was wonderful evening, and, and they always really do a fabulous job over there, so that was wonderful.
Good, good.
Teacher of the Year, I did send you information, just so you're aware, we're all going to start participating in Teacher of the Year with the Connecticut Department of Education, and so we have a committee, we have nominations out, if you'd like to nominate somebody, you certainly can, but it went out to the staff, and then we'll have a committee that'll have blind applications, and we're very excited about it, and we'll announce that on June 18th. Yeah?
Because I saw that application, and it said in the name of staff submitting, so is it intended to be like a peer-nominated type, not, not, not student?
It would have to be student right now, the issue is, we, this is the issue, we're trying to make next year's 2016 Connecticut Teacher of the Year, so that's why we're kind of pushing it a little bit, but it's not supposed to be, if you read it, it's not the best teacher, it's a teacher who represents your profession, and really can do it in a way that is professional and unique, and, because there are a lot of duties, so right now, we're doing it as adults, we're not offering it to the students, we may offer it in the future.
I was thinking about doing, completing it, and it was just really hard for me, I kept thinking, because I'm a parent, so I kept thinking of the teachers who've inspired my children.
Right.
And so the comments that I kept thinking of as I was looking at were the things that they told me, so it would sound as if it were, so that's not what we're looking.
Well, you know what, I don't want to tell a, a board member who is, you know, part of our educational community that they cannot.
I just, I, that's not the thing we're looking for.
Right, right now, it's from the teachers, but maybe in the future we can do that, but if you feel passionate about nominating someone, it's always nice to get the nomination regardless of, you know, whether you're, you know, when or not. And then the only other thing is just, I'm, I'm storing, I'm on Twitter, trying to tweet at all of our events, so if you want to start following me, I'm, I'm really trying to do that and get us out there a little bit, so feel free, I always, I try to, I keep, for about three weeks, I forgot to put a hashtag at it, okay, so now my hashtag is hashtag S U P T 12, 12, soup 12, so if you want to know, but I'll send that to you, but right now, it's in the infancy stages. And that's it.
Any questions?
I forgot in my dotage, why are we needing, why are we having the special board of that meeting next month?
We are. We, if perchance, if perchance, we get word this week that we have gotten the agri-science STEM, we, we just need a meeting to do some housekeeping, and just to give people some information, and I just wanted it to be there just in case, we may have to cancel it, but I just want it to be there just in case.
Will there be cake?
I can wrap up that half the cake, yes.
We'll leave this here for you.
Cupcakes.
Well, there's an worm stop, and there's an worm stop.
Exactly.
Cupcakes are always good.
Thank you for.
But we will find out.
You'll find out.
All right, committee reports, education, Michelle.
We're meeting June 15th, and it is our sort of end of the year State of Our Schools presentation from our principals, letting us know how our schools, sort of a recap of the year, so that's always a very informative meeting, and I hope everyone can attend.
You know, I should have mentioned, sort of the education thing, I guess, in my superintendent's report, congratulate Michelle and Rebecca Devine, Rebecca Devine from Bridgewater for being elected to the Board of Ed starting this July, and to congratulate Alan and Rebecca Devine, Rebecca Devine from Bridgewater for being elected, and to congratulate Emily for being elected, and as far as I understand, Tom Roxbury is down one member, but I know they're endeavoring to fill that seat, so. So congratulations to those people, I should have, I should have mentioned that, look forward to it starting.
Which ones down, Mom?
Roxbury. All right, education connection, anything else?
Yes, I went to the meeting last month, and it was the approval of their annual budget, it's interesting, so they have a lot of P for Service programs with Before and After School, and Head Start, and some other workshops, but a lot of their budget is grant-based, and because the state doesn't have their budget together, they, they really look at reducing their operating expenses as much as possible, and they're hoping that they will then be able to reinstate that money once the state has got their work stuff together. So it was interesting to really look at the budget of everything that they do, which is a lot, we went through their goals for the, for the next year, and I, I can't say it enough, every time I go, I'm just amazed, it's a remarkable organization, some really intelligent people there, and I know that our faculty, our staff and faculty use them as a resource, and they just, you know, we should always remember, if we're stumped about something, try a connection, because they've got people who talk to people in the state who know what's going on with all sorts of stuff, so, yeah, it was a, it was a very informative meeting.
Okay, great, thank you. So, these, Greg, you? No, I don't need you to report with me on that, that stuff, between now and the end of June. Valerie, financial.
We met before this meeting, we went over the financial report as of May 26th, we have 1.6% or $344,000 remaining in the budget, which is a great position, we went over a few issues, later on in the meeting, we'll have three, we've recommended the three motions that will be made about advancing the 1% fund or $206,000, changing the fee for the lunch, the lunch end to adults, and our usual health and school nutrition program, trying to opt out of, so we'll get into that later, then we discussed, Bob's been very proactive about ballot referendum, the question itself, the kind of strategy of putting it in one uh, the kind of strategy of putting it in one question, whether the board will go for that at some future time, and how to handle the resultant bonds if we have one question, that is, the science labs and the agro-science STEM. But that's just a conversation for now, but that was reviewed by Doug Gillette, so we're beginning in a good way. Uh, let's see, we talked about some housekeeping, uh, health retirement bank account for the retirees, I'll get into that. Some new GASP regulations that need an actuarial study, the sale of the Sun Life shares, which we had talked about before, that was about seventy thousand bucks, which goes to the towns, not us. Um, we are handling our early retirement offer, uh, from the present budget in some cases, and also preparing for, uh, those people, they will be still carried under the present budget, so we'll be in a better position in the now approved new budget. Might look at a new fund system, which has some great benefits, um, in terms of providing some security, maintenance, and repair, and it will save some money. And then we discussed something called the Raptor Security, which I got all excited about, because I thought there were dinosaurs up here. Um, but basically, it is a very sophisticated visitor background checking system. And, um, you know, it does all sorts of magical things, uh, goes into the history of, of any visitor that comes up, so we know who we're dealing with, and, um, has a panic button situation if there's an issue with that first contact, and prints the visitor badge. So I thought that was very proactive on a security level, and that was it. I don't think I missed anything.
Very comprehensive, thank you. Any questions around, uh, Michelle?
Yep, sorry, I missed it, um, but the one percent, one point six percent left, does that include a transfer for the one percent fund of two oh six or whatever?
Transfer's been taken care of.
So that's one point six on top of that.
Correct.
Right, and we're working on, we're working on something that, uh, everybody's been anxious to look at, and we just don't have the numbers to point through us.
I'm sorry, good, good, please, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Valerie.
So we'll take care of that and new business, those three, uh, motions.
Okay, negotiations, Greg, anything?
Uh, yeah, well, nothing to report. We are, uh, in, still in negotiations with the, uh, custodians, cafeteria workers, and with the, uh, car, car professionals in the office. Non-certified, non-certified, yeah, that's secure. Um, those negotiations are continuing, we have not re, they have not been approved yet. Okay, thank you. I, I hope to have something to report back to you, where the contract ends on June thirtieth.
Policies and bylaw, Michelle?
Uh, yep, we met, and, um, we have several policies on, uh, the agenda for tonight's first reading, and for a second reading.
You got two for second and two for first?
Two for first, two for second, and a couple of other policies that we've been working on, that, that we've been speaking with, um, our lawyer, and the case lawyer, trying to sort out stuff before we bring it to the board, so we're continuing forward.
Thank you. And, uh, one more question, Alan, anything else?
Uh, no, we haven't met, uh, we, uh, I think on the fifteenth, we're scheduled, and we can meet then, because it will be after the third, which is two days from now, we'll know with the legislature, and we'll be prepared to start planning, uh, again, shackles will come off.
All right. Okay, fine. What's the whole business then, Michelle? Second reading of policy six-one-three-zero, organization.
Yes, so if you pull that up, um, everything was, uh, given to you in your, in the packet, um, there was no change from the first reading, and the only new language is that Shipog, Shipog Valley School is a six-toe school.
I'll move to accept for a second reading.
Second, I have to move in second, and any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Right, that's, thank you, Michelle. Eight point two, second reading, policy five-one-three-one-point-nine-one-one, hazing.
Okay, this, um, we made the, there were three, I believe, three changes from the first reading. They were all very minor, and if you look at your policy, they were, are, have a strike through and a blue highlight. Um, anything that is in a yellow highlight was new for the first reading, so that's the, the color coding. So if you'll see in that second paragraph, um, we struck the, 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 it says, "It's such bullying," and, and put in "that." That was Susan's request, and it seemed to make sense. Uh, oh, there was a typo in the first sentence that we fixed, but didn't highlight. And then the second change, all the way towards the end, uh, we struck the word, uh, amend policies, and we left, uh, put in, review school procedures relating to bullying and the illegal violence, so that there was no confusion, that the committee was not changing board policy, but was making recommendations on school procedures in relation to bullying and illegal violence. So, uh, everything else is the same as it was before reading.
Motion.
Move to accept as a second reading.
Is there a second? I have to move in second, yes, good. Somehow I, I looked for it, and I didn't see it going through, did I? The, the thing, the change you just talked about.
Do you have the right?
I don't see the color either.
Okay, that, I think I, yeah, okay.
Towards the bottom?
Yeah.
You see the little blue?
I, I absolutely do, but I didn't see it.
I know, and I would like to just...
Good, that's fine.
Uh, put out there a huge thank you to Sue Haverly, who helps deal with this, and who puts, makes it glue in yellow, and she does the strikings, it's a very tedious, difficult job, and she does fabulous work. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
All right, so move in second, it's, uh... Can I, I have another question, though, uh, and that is, the, the change is the paragraph ten on page...
So they have letters at the top, so the...
Parentheses.
In parentheses, so, so five point, some, five-one-three-one-point-nine-one-one.
Okay, I, I see it, I see it, this is page F.
F?
Paragraph ten, uh, we took out the, uh, this, let's see what, what's the name of this policy, uh, the name of this particular piece of the policy is called something.
Uh, that part is the Safe School Climate Plan.
Right, and, and it's, and it says that, um, requires the school to invite the parents or guardians of the student that commits any verified act of bullying or illegal violence, and the parents or guardians of the student against whom such act was directed. And that's been taken out, against the ones against the act being directed. And, um, it, it talks about, um, and there's some further language, so can you, can you, in lightness of the white, that was the...
Well, okay, so it, it's, they're, they're both invited, but I get, in the previous, it says, right in the middle of ten there, "To a meeting separate and distinct from the meeting of the parents, guardians of the student against whom the act of bullying was directed." So that must be like number nine, yeah, they're number nine. They used to be together in one bullet point, and it made it sound like they were invited together.
Invited to the same meeting.
Yeah, and so, and so just to clarify that that is not the intent, to bring them together, there, it's internal...
I, I, I get it, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You see that? Okay, good, I'm, I'm, thank you. All right, it's been moved, I'm sorry, Valerie?
Who is the district's safe schools coordinator? I mean, who is normally...
Teresa DeBrito.
Okay, and then who would normally be the safe school climate specialist?
Teresa DeBrito is.
And the safe school climate committee would be?
Um, we have a, um, a, a big committee, we have Barbara Lankis, um, well, that's...
Principals?
The principals.
These are the schools.
Oh, is that the, go with the old one, so I can just tell you who, and tell me again what you're asking, because there's a couple of differences.
Just the, it's called the Safe School Climate Committee, that's what you're supposed to have.
That's us.
That's the bigger.
That's the bigger committee, so that's me, Bob, Don, Barbara Lankis, and Rocky, am I right?
Yep.
And then each school has their own Safe School Climate Committee.
And, because there's gonna be confidential reports, so it's not a parent or volunteer.
No, 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 no. Because you do review.
And it does talk about that somewhere, and, and we made sure that the purple language was included, but, um, confidential information. Okay, great.
Is there anything else? All right, it's been moved and seconded, uh, all those in favor of approving five-one-three-one-point-nine-one-one, hazing, the second reading, this policy with the board, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Great, thank you. Moving on to new business, nine point one, first reading, policy four-one-one-two-point-five, security check fingerprinting, Michelle?
I have them all open, sorry. I pulled that four-one-one-point-two.
Two-point-five. Bob, just move things along, we'll be accepted for first reading.
Thank you, I, I, if I recall, second. No, it's very similar, and it's, mine's loaded.
Yeah.
Wait a second. Oh, you've still got bullying there. Okay, so the new language is in yellow, um, and this is, oh, right, this is what, the Department of Children and Families, Child Abuse and Neglect Registry is a new requirement that any employee applying for a job, has to submit a record check to the, to that department. And that's state law, so, um, our policy has been updated to include that, and the legal references are down at the bottom.
But the version that I...
What? Four-one-one-two-point-five, from the, it was...
Four-one-two-point-five. Oh, I have the wrong one, I'm sorry. Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think one of the changes to it is that student teachers are now required.
Correct.
As opposed to the...
Yeah, sorry, that's the last, that's the last, the last paragraph, student teachers are also included in that.
I'm pulling up in the, the, the fingerprinting, right, okay. All right, so four-one-one-two-point-five, security check fingerprinting is moved and seconded for first reading. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, good pass for first reading. Thank you. Item nine point two, first reading, policy four-one-one-two-point-two, certification.
Uh, yeah, this actually, there's very little change, we just have one sentence. We, Kate gave us a, a lot of, um, optional language of what to do in the case of a teacher whose certification, um, has lapsed. It was some pretty, um, pretty punitive language, and we decided to just leave that up to the superintendent's office to decide how they want to handle that, um, so, which really doesn't change the policy, because they always have the right to do that. And then we updated all the legal references, because this policy had not been touched since ninety-eight.
I have a question. How, does the central office track on a computer scheduling system every teacher's certification and dates perhaps? And do we send them like a reminder a year in advance that they need to get their...
It automatically gets kicked out to them right off the system when they're coming up for...
Right.
Uh, it gives them ample opportunity and warning to get their, uh, work together. It's their responsibility to do it, we give them a crutch to remind them, and it comes off on the, uh, human resources portion of the financial package that we have in place.
Okay.
That's a courtesy on Reg twelve, hard, not a requirement.
Not, not a requirement, but you know, since the superintendent is the person who pays through the nose in the event that, that, that someone's...
No, these notices come out automatically.
It really is our benefit, not our...
I think the state also sends you, um...
They send it, but we, we're...
In the mail.
And then if we don't get it in in a timely fashion, so that we can record it, and make it more current, that they didn't do it, it sends another reminder out to them. But ultimately, it falls into their purview to make sure that they get their license renewed properly.
And when you're not licensed, you are getting a sub, so you go from your salary to subpay. And that is active until you get your, uh...
Then you also get to a point where you're, there's a penalty for having certain, non-certified, a non-certified person in your certified position, and that's the superintendent has to deal with at that level. But there are warnings that go out all the time. This is the new software that we were able to get that out.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, with the software, we should be able to keep this from happening. It's just a black eye to the district.
Well, it just, it's just a reminder, it's a crutch.
We're both, both sorry, so let's not...
Valerie?
Move to accept for first reading, and I'm glad that we have this information, and it's automatic, it's more work for the business office, but sounds good.
Second, all right, it's moved in second, is there any other discussion? All right, and, uh, the motion is to approve four-one-one-two-point-two certification for a first reading, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, thank you very much, Michelle, through the board, uh, committee. Nine point three, healthy school nutrition programs, Valerie? Mahas, whoever?
Well, basically, every year, you know, there would be, we get minimal federal funds, and we have to follow certain programs in nutrition, and we usually opt out of it, though we still have very healthy lunches, so I'd like to make a motion, um, to approve an addendum to agreement for child nutrition programs, ED zero-nine-nine, to not participate under the Connecticut nutrition standards as published by the Connecticut Department of Education for school year two thousand fifteen, twenty sixteen.
Second, all right, so move in second, is there any discussion?
Do we need Bob to explain again why we do this every year? If you would like to.
Why, why don't we do it, just so we...
I think, I think we should, because it's, he's counterintuitive.
It seems strange, yes. I know, it does. We follow the guidelines, however, one of the rationales not to follow this guideline is that we have this program in place, both at the elementary level, it's called lunch, that, uh, volunteers help with, and that would cause us to stop doing that, and you couldn't do any fundraising and any other activities on school property, so it would preclude everybody from doing any of those activities. It's very restrictive what the child nutrition program has put us through, and it covers the whole time that school is in session, so even if an outside group were to come in here, they couldn't do anything on our premises either, even selling a candy bar. It's very restrictive to us, and it does us no good, and many school systems have opted out of this requirement. And we're small, and we have a secondary issue where we would have to have a dietitian and all kinds of stuff. All our menus are dietary correct, but we don't have the official dietitian as well. So it's working very well for us the way it is, and I don't see any reason to change it at this point.
Well, if you ever eat in that cafeteria, they do a very nice job, and it's a very well constructed menu, so I...
Ginger, Ginger does, she has all the ability to do it, so she's been trained, and we continue to train all the girls. Lovely staff of four women, they're doing, I think, a good job.
Michelle?
Um, are we penalized in any way by not participating in...
Not at the moment.
No, okay, there's no financial...
We're not losing much. In fact, if at some point, we continue to look at what they're requiring us to do versus what they're giving us for doing it, the paperwork is incredible, I get three to four emails a day from these folks, about just regulations and etc. It's a big burden.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion? All right, then all those in favor of the motion to not participate under the ED oh-nine-nine, Connecticut nutrition standards as published by the Connecticut Department of Education for school year two thousand fifteen, sixteen, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? If I only get passes, thank you. Nine point four, to consider and appropriate approve a lunch price increase for both students and adults for the school year two thousand fifteen, sixteen, students from two eighty-five to three dollars, and adults from three and a quarter to three seventy-five, as recommended by the finance committee at the May four, two thousand fifteen meeting.
So move, second.
Alan, seconds, any further discussion? Valerie, do you want to speak to it a little? Bob?
Well, we had discussed it during the, the budget process, the, you know, student lunches losing money because of cost of food, and the fact that we are, you know, trying to make it a standalone, independent, um, um, budget group, including, uh, benefits, so it made sense.
And food costs are, with all the things that you have to buy, like, uh, the type A lunch, the cost has been going up dramatically. And the more they take out of food, the higher the cost is, and, you could see in the grocery store. It's fat-free, it costs more money than if they left it in. It's fat-free, it costs more money than if they left it in there. Go figure, right?
Is there anything further on that? All right, then all those in favor of the price increases set forth on the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, that passes. Then 9.5, to consider if appropriate, in accordance with Connecticut general statute 10-5, current two, transfer up to 1% or $206,169 from the approved fiscal year 2014, 15 budget appropriation into the reserve fund for capital and non-recurring expenditures, as recommended by the Finance, excuse me, Finance Committee at the March, May 4, 2015 meeting. So move.
Second.
Michelle has the second. All right. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Passes. Is there a motion to adjourn? Still moving.